Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our, this is the first regular board meeting of the Village Ball Spa Board Trustees in the month of September, September 12th, 2023. Since Carla's not here, here's what I'm gonna do. We're gonna open the public hearing, but pause the public hearing and let Ed Hirsch go and give a presentation, which is supposed to be a presentation about the Lions Club doing some things in our community. And then we'll open up, we'll actually hold a public hearing in probably about 10 minutes or thereabouts, or start taking good comments at that point. That's okay with everybody, since it's probably be good to have their attorney here for this public hearing. But I will read, I will first open the public hearing by reading the ad that was put out in the notice, Village Ball Spa Notice Public Hearing, Consider Adoption of Local Law Notice hereby given pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023 at 7:01 PM at the Boston Spa Public Library located at 21 Milton Avenue, Boston Spa, New York for the purpose of considering the adoption of Local Law Number 3 of 2023. If adopted, Local Law Number 3 of 2023 would repeal Chapter 27 Code of Ethics of the Village of Boston Spa, replace it in its entirety with new Chapter 27 Code of Ethics. Written comments on Local Law Number 3 of 2023 can be submitted to the village clerk up and through the time of the public hearing. A copy of Proposed Local Law Number 3 of 2023 can be obtained at the village offices and on the village website, village's website. One, one note, Local Law Number 3 is actually Local Law, Proposed Local Law Number 2 now. It has no force in effect difference insofar as there were prior laws. We're supposed to go numerical order when we pass public laws. And as such, we have not pursued Local Law Number 2 in its entirety. So that we've renumbered to Local Law Number 2, just in case you see that on the agenda and are confused about that. At this point, I'd ask for a motion to temporarily pause the public hearing and to be picked up in a little bit later in this meeting. Can I get a motion for that? Trustee Fandesa, trustee Baskin, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ed, why don't we push you to the front here, just so that we can get you off and running? Your meetings after meetings right up there is fine. Give me a second. I'll make sure you're also on Zoom. Oh, it's on? Does, does?
Testing.
Check, check. Cash. I promise I'll keep it real brief. Good to go? Okay. So Ed Hirsch, Boston Spa Lions Club. As you know, we've been the caretakers in name of the music park since 2017, which we love so much. Thank you for giving us that opportunity. We took that over because there was a stage there. One of the previous mayors had said, why don't you use it? So that's how this all thing came about. That stage was built by an Eagle Scout back in 2012, if you don't know the background of that. Well, over time, it's starting to deteriorate a little bit, mostly the bottom of the stage. There's no gutters on top, so the rain that comes down and the snow that sits there for the months, the bottom of the wood has started to rot. So just so happens, one of our new members is a leader, scout leader. And he suggests, he said, I've got some boys that are trying to earn their pins, badges, whatever they're trying to do as Eagle Scouts. And I said, well, this was already a project. He said, no, a lot of times they'll take one project and add on to it. I know nothing about scouts, so. So he suggested this. So we had these two young men come up to the park in the summertime and they looked at it. We have two projects, one of which would incorporate working on the stage. The decking is fine. It's tracks. It's perfect. The roof is in great shape. About four years ago, the Lions paid to bring the power from the pole to the stage and now the bands can just plug in. We need to do some repair. The kids have messed around with it. But this young man wants to take the bottom of the decking, redo it, stain it, make it all look nice. He wants to widen the stairs. We kind of looked at it and said, what do we need? And, you know, what, what would help us for future concerts? The stairs are a little narrow and there's no railing. So we're looking at safety issues to cover us and to cover the village. So they want to widen the stairs, put a railing on it. Also, the back of the stage is quite high. I mean, I think cold wise, it should have been a railing on there originally. So they want to make a temp, not temporary. A, we'll put it up there when it's needed. It can be opened or taken off because the bands will pull up there and load from the back of the stage makes it easier. So they want to do some work on that. They want to do some landscaping, put some crushed stone down. So when the rain does hit, it won't splash all over it. And then the best thing is they're gonna take from the electricity that we started and then have an electrician go up and put lights in there. When it gets to the end of August, these poor bands that you guys see are breaking down in the dark and I feel bad for them. So there'll be overhead lights in there. That's one project. The other project is they want to build us three. The garbage cans that are down there are like plasticky type thing. And I talked to Jeff about this. This, this young man wants to build three full-size garbage can covers. And the door will open up and a 32 gallon will go in there. So we'll have one at the top of the hill, one in front of the building, one behind the building. Because sometimes for big concerts or family fun day, the garbage will overflow. He'll also make us a sandwich board for like, you know, putting what the specials are. And the best thing that this young man wants to do is, I complained because of the, where the spring comes out. As you know, if you've seen it, it's just a copper pipe, which the kids keep messing with. And then a bunch of bricks and the water just dumps into it. It splashes all over the building. The kids take it and some gross things with it. So this young man wants to take like a porcelain basin and kind of get some decorative rocks, put it in there, and then somehow will cover the copper pipe. It can't be raised up. I've tried it. They told me I got a beautiful antique faucet from Kyle Williams. Couldn't use it. The minute you raise the water up, it shuts off. It's just so much pressure that comes out of the ground and that's it. So these are the two projects. They're two different young men that want to do this. Just like in the Lions, when we have our functions, they're covered for insurance. The scouts cover the village. They don't do the work. So these kid, when I say kids, they're young adults. They're not gonna be there with saws and hammers. They're not gonna be getting up on ladders. There's adult supervision. The Eagles, the scouts do it themselves, you know, their parents and contractors. Plus, we're gonna be there. The Lions want to be there to help them, serve them, watch, and so forth. We have decided, normally the scouts will go out and try to solicit and try to get funding from Curtis Lumber and different organizations. We decided to do this ourselves. We had a good year, so we want this to be a Lions project. So we're gonna pay for it. The village gets to own it, because it's not our property. Two weekends. The stage is on September, the last day of September, September 30th and October 1st. And I think I checked with you. There's nothing on the calendar. So I don't have anything planned. There's no concerts. They're all done. That's the one. The other young man for the garbage cans, it was supposed to be October 7th and 8th. October 8th is the car show. So I said, you can't do it. You can't. So he'll come in on Monday, the 9th, which is a holiday and the kids are off to school. Do we need to give you an approval for the usage at the? I don't know how, I mean, I, I wanted, like, like before, every time we've done something, I've pretty much let everyone know. We, we finished putting in all of the benches. We're done with that. It's up to you guys if you want it formally or, you know. I told them they couldn't do any work until we got permission from the village. That's the way I left it. Okay, so give me the dates and we'll do a surreptitious motion and open up for any. The stage project would be September 30th and October 1st. And then the other project, garbage can, the Old Iron Spring Building project would be really October 9th. They're, they're building the cans off-site, the garbage can covers, and then they're gonna be coming to the park on October 9th. So you need exclusive use of the park for those dates? Those two days, those three days, whatever. Can I get a motion granting the Lions Club and Scouts the ability to have usage of Old Iron Spring Park on September 30th, October 1st, and October 9th for renovation project? Trustee Fandesa, trustee Cormos, because of surreptitious, we allow 90 seconds for anybody in public that wants to give a comment. Questions, anything? We appreciate all the support. I just wish we could have better weather. Five camps, concerts, I cancel five. Seeing nothing on Zoom or any, or in the house, any discussion by the trustees?
I just wondered, Mike, Mike, the, 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 the volume will be.
Thanks. Check. Yeah. The, just the role, I think you're right. You're doing great. Thank you very much for doing all this for the village. The role of the park and tree board just comes to mind. Just wondering if this is something like in theory would go by them and then to us? Or, and also, you know how we made a park and tree board? We passed the motion where they can just do work in the village as long as they coordinate it and they don't need an additional motion each time. Potentially maybe something with Iron Spring, but also similar kind of arrangement where there's sort of a, an ongoing approval as long as it's coordinated or something. But those are my two thoughts.
Would you be willing to split the park and tree board about this?
Sure. Let them know what we're doing, absolutely. Because if we stay in good with these groups, I mean, they may want to do other work. Right. There's other young kids that want to get that, those badges or whatever they're doing.
But I'm happy to pass this down. I want to slow things up.
Yeah. Only question I would have, when you're doing onsite work, is the Lions indemnifying the village, like non-DGW staff, and work, how does that all work?
I don't know. I, I've tried to get the scout leader to come and, because they've done this before. They're actually, we were just talking about it. They're actually also working on the, what is it?
The Community Board of Board, the charter.
O'Briens. That's a huge project, like $5,000. That's another one. So I don't know how they do that.
I think earlier you said that they would have their insurance.
They are insured, like.
So perhaps we get that certificate, just so.
Can I get amendments to motion to adding the following phrase or clause that proof of insurance is to be provided by scouts and or Lions? Probably get one too. Yeah, before work is performed, that is yours and, yeah. Both the motion maker and the second are approve of that amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ed, thanks for everything Lions do for the Village of Boston Spa. We appreciate your support. Can I get a motion to resume the public hearing related to formerly known as Local Law Number 3, currently Local Law Number 2, concerning the Code of Ethics at, is it 7:14 PM? Trustee Baskin? Trustee Fandesa, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time, if you'd like to speak about the Code of Ethics revisions or Local Law Number 2, as we're calling it here, please raise your hand or raise your hand on Zoom and we will get to you after five minutes and the normal respect, et cetera, requirements are requested here.
I, I would just like to add, any comments you have, if you could refer to a specific section and a specific language that you're concerned with and how you think it would need to be changed? That would be helpful for us.
Thank you very much. Julie Gazitos.
Stand here.
Right, voting for us, it is always. Please, your name, address, and then we'll start the clock after that.
Hi, I'm Julie Gazetis, 57 Chapman Street, Boston Spa. I have a few comments. I, I would like to just disclose initially that I am on the Ethics Board and the Ethics Board and I worked on getting a copy of the proposed code to, to the board last year. And I think that they took a lot of what we did and they used that. But there are also some changes that they made that I just wanted to make a few comments on. The first one, and I'm gonna go by what I feel is most important, would be the annual disclosure form and that's Section 2719. I have no issue with anybody having to supply a disclosure form to, to the village upon becoming a member of any board or an employee. My only concern is that this, it's a little too strict in this, in this code. And the first, the first thought here is in Section A, "Within 30 days of any material change and information contained in the most recently filed statement, an officer or employee shall file a signed amendment to the state reflecting such change." I think that that is a little bit too much for, for a lot of people to have to, to do. 30 days, especially when you go back and you look at who you're having to, to disclose about. It includes family members and a lot of times you don't know what a family member is doing. I think that an annual disclosure update is, is fine, but holding someone to a 30-day, to 30-day change is, is too much because it's going to keep, it's going to scare people. And I think that when you, when you add this type of language, then people will be, will refrain from participating further. It could be a trap. If you forget, then just to say that it wasn't an oversight instead of just simply or, or an attempt to be untruthful. And part C of this, I think that if you go to number four, you have to disclose family members that have an interest in, in anything with, with the Village of Boston Spa. That's way too broad. I just, I, I really hope that that gets taken out. There, there are many families that just don't share that type of information. And again, reflect, referring back to the definition of a family member. Again, I don't agree with the definition of the family member, but it includes grandparents, grandchildren, aunts, uncles, cousins, nieces, nephews, first cousins. I have to say, I have no idea what my first cousins are doing regarding their financials. So I think that that is against overbroad. The second thing that I would like to bring up is really the definition of the family member. So if you, we propose that the definition of a family member be a parent, step-parent, sibling, step-sibling, spouse, child, stepchild, grandparent. The, the Board of Trustees went a little further and added grandchildren, which I have no objection to because that's really the same as a grandparent. I'm fine with that. Uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, first cousin, I do think that that's overbroad, especially in our small community. There's a lot of people that would like to participate and I don't think it should be. I don't think that we need to have financial interest of all of those family members. Third, 27-7. This is holding of investments. I, I just don't agree that in Section B, that we should add the language that the section does not prohibit a municipal officer or employee from acquiring any other investments or the following assets. I would like it to say real property located within a municipality. Language that is, that was added is, and use as their personal residence or residence of a family member. I think that that, I think that that is too much, that it, it's not saying that you can't have these properties, but it, it almost looks like that automatically triggers an ethics code violation if you have residential rental properties or any other commercial rental properties.
I've gotta stop you for one second. Carla and I are both looking at each other because you said 27-7B and we don't see a B on the version we're looking at.
Oh, so am I looking at a old version?
Well, is there an actual B or did? There is? Not on the website.
I don't know when that was on the website. Nope.
It's been so many, so confused.
Yeah, okay. So what do you, you have, you have no B? You just had a R?
Re, 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 what you have in D and just.
This section does not prohibit a municipal officer or employee from acquiring any other investments or the following assets. It's not identified as B. It's just on here, but that language. Okay, and it has a one, two, and three, I mean, and so does.
B must have been utilized somehow in an edit.
Okay. Okay, so does one say real property located within the municipality and stop? Or is there additional?
And use as their personal residence or residence of a family member.
That's the part that I have an issue with. I'm sorry that I'm not referencing in the right.
You're fine.
Okay, so.
So again, your issue on that was, and we're not counting, it's been too tight because we just want to make sure we got this straight.
Yes.
What was your issue?
My issue is that I don't, I think it should be real property located within the municipality, stop. So that doesn't trigger that, that's a conflict with your official duties if you have any real property within the municipality. This one adds that as long as you use it for your personal residence or residence of a family member, it's not a conflict. I don't think it should be a conflict if you have any real property in the village.
About 30 seconds left. When I earlier stopped you, so if there's anything else, go right up.
Okay, I guess. There are, there are a few portions that I think do not belong in the board. It, under the Ethics Board, I think that, let's see. 27-21, Board of Ethics. Yes. Actually, 27-20, I don't think should be a Ethics Board issue. I think that just needs to be a policy issue with the, the village and this is public access. Am I citing the proper?
Yes, you're fine there.
I don't think that that belongs in the Ethics Code. I think that that's just a policy that the village should, should have. And there's a couple more that I'll send you with that.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work and your, Board's work, the extended Board for initially putting together the draft from last year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Keith Lewis, 308 East 5th Street. Frank, I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding your violations of the current Ethics Code, including the disregard of the Freedom of Information law, taking my time.
Excuse me.
To censor, this is about.
If I may.
This is about.
Mr. Lewis, if I may.
Yes, yes, of course.
This is a public hearing on this particular ethics law, not the one that's currently in place. You can't talk about things about the one that's currently in place. If you have concerns with the language of this, please let us know.
The mayor, as a clarification?
Let me finish, please. If there's anything you have to say otherwise, then you can come back under public comment later on. But for now, this is limited solely to the language of the public hearing.
I, I'm asking the mayor to abstain from the vote because in his comments in one of our last village meetings, he said he wouldn't support this because he felt that it was targeting he and his family. And in my opinion, if he, he opens that up to say, listen, I'm being targeted by a new law. I think we have to look at the fact that the old law hasn't in fact kept him from doing the things that he's done. So I don't think it's fair to use that as an argument.
Okay. So. Do you have a comment on the language of this law?
I have a comment on his voting on this law because I think it's important for his representation to the public to be accurate.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna finish.
Oh.
I'm taking back my time.
Well, you just stated you have nothing to say about the law. So you, you have more to say?
I have concerns about your decision to promote that this law is based on the fact that it is targeting you, because that's not accurate. There have been instances in the Freedom of Information law that you have not upheld within your office in the fact that there are foils that are outstanding for six months, in the fact that you're not uniformly enforcing the code within our water, billed by targeting Double Day Woods and their council has said that they've been charged.
Chief, at this point, you are no longer on the topic of the code that is in front of us. So if you'd like to give us some public comment.
I'm asking, I'm asking that you abstain because if you're not able to uphold the current Ethics Law, if you're not able to do that and, and do it in a way where you're being truthful, then I worry about the credibility of the new Ethics Law if you in fact are a part of arguing against or for. So I'm asking for you to abstain.
Thank you.
And I'll give you a copy of this and I'll bring it, I'll read it at public comment.
You can provide it to the clerk. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, do you have somebody?
We have, we have somebody in Zoom, actually.
You want me to go to Mike?
Yeah, who is I, I can't see.
Mike, I can.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. Mike Ikalutu, 9 Russell Street. I will be brief because I am sorry to say I did not read through everything in the detail that the prior speaker had, obviously has done. The, the main point I would just like to emphasize is that over the last 10 to 12 years, we have had numerous instances at the federal and state levels of officials, elected officials, who have abused their office. And as elected officials, you are intended to be public servants. And as a member of the public, I think it's important that you are forthright and upfront about interests that you have that might affect policy decisions you make. And in that spirit, I encourage you to adopt a disclosure form. And I cannot quote details of the current proposed disclosure form, but the idea of a comprehensive disclosure form, I think is critical to the public being able to gain greater credibility in our elected officials and their actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, did you still comment or? Come on up.
Gina Marosi, 10 Old Glory Lane, Boston Spa. Am I allowed to comment on procedure of this? Procedure of how we got to this point, of this language?
You should probably just focus on the language that's here. I know it's not much fun to hear, but this is, we, we're.
So aside from pointing out specifics in the wording, I can't comment on how we got to that wording.
If you have issues with the wording that's in here, then you can talk about the issues that you have with the wording that's in here.
But I can't comment on how we got to that wording.
I guess start and we'll see where it goes.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Because really the point, just so everybody knows, the point of the public hearing is to look at the law that was on the website, which I don't know if that's the law everybody here has, quite honestly.
I don't even know if we saw.
What you're looking at, this looks like something different than what I have. We do the same copy, I'll leave it. That was a little concern I had, because there's so many copies. So the purpose is just to look at that one. We've done everything else beforehand, to look at this one, see what the public says about this particular one that's in front of us, not prior ones that this.
And how about language that's lack, that one feels is lacking?
If you want to add language, absolutely, that's part of it.
Okay, so that's all part of what I'm gonna say. So thank you for your advice. My first issue that, in, in going through it quickly, is that, well, last week, last meeting, I brought up that there was nothing about lying to the public in there and I believe that was added. The next thing I have issue with that's, I feel is missing, is using your, your political office to harass the public. I don't see anything in there about that. Am I incorrect on that?
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry. We, just want to make sure we, that was in the, if truthfulness thing was in there, it is.
It is in there, yes. Using your political office to harass the public, is there anything in there about that?
There is language in there about harass the public.
Thank you, guys. I said I paged through quickly, so I didn't. And I, again, I don't even know if I'm using the right version, so. My biggest issue with the language and the changes, and the changes, and the changes, is that the changes were made by the members of this board. And I don't believe the changes were sent back to the committee for review. Is that true?
That is accurate.
So.
Actually, I think, I think early on. Actually, I think, I think early on, we did make some changes that were sent back to the.
That is true, at the very, very beginning.
The very beginning, but as of late, that hasn't happened. Now, the ethics committee was charged with creating ethics code and put language in that they felt was suitable. I know that the board is supposed to approve this language at the end of the day. What I don't understand is if there were changes or language that should be added, subtracted, changed, why every time this was done, it wasn't sent back to the committee for their approval, for their consideration, as that was their charge. I don't like the idea of a board writing its own ethical code. You have your fingerprints all over this and it's like the crazies are running the asylum. This committee should have the final say and the final language that's stick to you and you either approve it or you don't approve it. And if there's more changes to be made, it gets kicked back to the committee. That was their charge. That's what they were selected to do. And I don't understand why all of you feel that you are now in control of the rules that govern you. That's incorrect. Thank you.
Anybody else? He does that. Pretty clearly, lots of from some of that, so don't worry about that. Um, yes.
Can I?
I'm just surprised because you have a specific criteria that is set forth. I'm not a deterrent.
But you have one more thing.
Christine, it's Patrick, thirty one Chapel Street. I just want to speak in support of this ethics law, this, this proposed ethics law, which I find very comprehensive and very well done. I have read it and I think, you know, we all, in the best of all possible worlds, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need or want an ethics code. I think there's a desire to think, oh, we're, you know, we're a village of friends, we're all neighbors here. Why don't we need something that is this comprehensive? My, with my experience, I've lived, I've worked for the federal government, the state government, and obviously I've worked for the village government, have never worked for the county. This is, a lot of this is very standard operating procedure. And ethics, the way this is written, it, it speaks to people's motivation. It's trying to get and maintain that people who work for government are doing so for the right reasons. And also a lot of the things in here would, would allow that people who have ill intent, if it was deliberate, would be, it would slow them up a little. I think it also has some significant things that I've seen in here that I didn't see in the old, old ethics law about protecting employees from being pressured to do certain things. I remember working in state government, being pressured to contribute to political parties. That's not allowed people and that's covered in here. So I think this gives a guide to employees, officers, and appointees of the village for, on, on their code of, it is both an ethics law and a code of conduct, which I think is, is the fact that it's put together is, is a very good thing. I also, I don't have a problem with the annual disclosure. I think that we have to remember that it's, you only, you're not, this is not like you're going to fill out your income tax and submit it with everything you own and everything about you up to your shoe size to somebody and have it, have it in a cabinet someplace or on file someplace. This is, you only have to report if you have, if you do have a, of a conflict with, or an interest in something. That's really what you have to do in the disclosure form. Or you fill the form out and you say, I don't have, I don't have any interest. If you get to the point where you're a member of your family, you, you're not responsible by this. The way this is written, the way I interpret it, the way I know that I, that ethics codes have been enforced in the times that I have been subject to them. If you don't, if, if you have relatives who are sketchy and you don't know about them, that's not your, you know, that's, you don't have to go out and find all your relatives and, and, and find out what they're doing. It's just your knowledge at the time that you fill this out and you, you make that statement. So I am in support of this document. I think, you know, well done. It's, it's a long time coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call on Zoom. There you go.
Great. Um, I would just, could I?
Could you go over there? Just so that you can be heard. I apologize. Thank you.
Danielle Thompson, City Hall. I just wonder, because there's confusion between all the different, there's three different, you know, codes of ethics out there. You have to look at everyone. You have to look at every sentence. And there are, there's some really good language edits. I wonder if we shouldn't, if the ethics committee would be willing to review it and kick it back in a reasonable amount of time? And perhaps help override some of the issues that are there.
Thank you for that offer. I guess that might be a discussion point for later. Anybody else?
Pete Martin, wanted to just to record. Danielle said it perfect. It's been so many different types of ethics rewriting. I think if you send us what you want, the final one, send it back to us, we'll be looked at it. I mean, it's, some of it's quite acceptable, some of it's like, you know, your brother, your sister, your cousin, your sixth cousin, your aunt, your stepson, your step grandson. I mean, it's just, I've never seen anything like that. Christine says she has, but I've never seen that involved. So I think there's too many versions. I think we're all confused. I think, why don't you guys write, write down your final version that you would like, send to us. We'll put all our comments in there, see if we get something in between. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Melissa Taylor.
Thank you. Hi, Melissa.
Melissa Taylor for Creekview Court, Milton. I'm listening and I'm concerned that it seems that some community members are being allowed to speak, not specifically about the language, while Keith Lewis was shot down and not allowed to make his comment. And I just want to make sure that we're following the rules.
You have any comments about the law?
No, I'm expressing my concern, just as other people have made comments that were not specific to the language of the law. Yet Keith was not allowed to make his comment. I find that concerning.
Thank you. Anybody else? Something slammed through there. Is that, and that's it? Can I get a motion to? Oh, yeah, it would be close, yeah. I get a motion to close the public hearing at seven forty P M. Trustee Cormos, trustee Condeza, discussion. All in favor? Let's go. Roll call.
Ask him?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Condeza Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Cormos?
Aye.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes. Good. We'll continue that discussion coming soon, soon as meeting near you.
Sorry, can you just, I know there's a number of steps. Can we clarify what our next steps are? Maybe Carla can, in this meeting, with regards to the, or the law.
I think nine C is actually there. So if you hold on, we will get there, I can soon enough. Um, here's announcements after I ask for a motion that minutes of August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting be approved.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond.
For a second.
The second goes trustee Condeza. She can't steal that from me. Discussion.
I saw a typo that says fans, the group that's giving us money. And instead of four thousand something, it says forty four thousand. So I think the dollar sign, I think it was a four instead of a dollar sign.
That was wishful thinking by our clerk. Okay, I, can I, I, so I, can I get an amendment to say minutes of the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting be approved as amended? And that would be, who's my first? It's you.
Yes.
And trustee Condeza, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Here's announcements, somewhat brief here. Thank you again to everybody that attended and helped put together the nine eleven ceremony last night. It was a fantastic turnout. For as solemn an event as it is, it's just nice to be able to see everybody get together on what is agreed for in the day in this community to get together, kind of hold each other up the way we do. So thank you, our events task force folks, Mary Price Bush, chairwoman, Gina Marosi, helps put this together every year, and everybody else on the events task force. Thank you for that. John Beahan stopped by and, and to me, the official bound version that they are obligated to give us of the village's comprehensive plan. Thank you to John and his company for their work on this. Thanks to Carla, thanks to the committee that worked on this comprehensive plan committee, and everybody that gave comments and thoughts, et cetera. Thank you so much to everybody for that. And it did include the change from last meeting. And it has a reference to that meeting to ensure that it can be traced back if there's any question. Feel free to someone if you'd like.
And we have a PDF of it available on the website.
I believe you.
It's already on the website.
Yeah.
And it's already been provided to Jeffrey Williams of Wiltshire County as well. And I gave a copy to Anna and Dave and Rory, for their, their, so we got that all cooked.
Before, almost just before the meeting, I received a two hundred page document from Reverge, which is a draft of a plan for bids, or bid plan for the John Street Water Tower. We're going to submit it over to legal and to B D W to review it in full to ensure that it is accurate in its statements. We'll send it back to Don at that point, then back out to the trustees at that point to review it before we have it disseminated and see kids. So we'll be working on that over the next few weeks. Thanks to Don Rhodes and Reverge for that. Otherwise, I think that's enough for me for now. We've got some stuff to talk about later on. Let's go to the Asian reports and we'll start with Liz. Thank you. Trustee, very good.
So B S P A, similar things as last time. They're gearing up for some of their biggest events. Car show, eventually, they're looking for volunteers. So if anybody wants volunteers, Dana would love to take your help. And they're also preparing for shop mall Saturday. And also they have the date for the parade, which is probably the parade, which will be December first, I think. So they're getting ready for all of that. They're busy, otherwise kind of just plugging along with all of what they do. I have a sense of report from Chief Bayshore from the fire, from the fire department. But I just wanted to highlight some, some notable things. In the month of August, they responded to forty one emergency calls for assistance, which adds to the total for the year, which is now three hundred and thirty calls. They're a very busy fire department. And notably, they worked on fire, structured fires, one which led to the arrest of an arson, arsonist that was.
Or supposed to.
Yeah, I didn't finish the word. And then also another one, which was in the town of Milton. No, yes, in the town of Milton, that ended up saving a home, which is really good to hear. That was in Finley Road. Their extent will be getting into training. They're always training. There was one hundred and fifty person hours that they committed to in August, as well as they're getting new equipment to keep them safe. And there's some, more information will be coming, but they received a grant, federal grant for more equipment to keep them safe. And that was announced by Paul Tonko. We're very thankful for that. And they continue to do pre-incident planning in some of the higher risk buildings. So I, I just want to, you know, where we can, just highlight how busy our fire department is, all our volunteers. They're doing amazing work. And Chief Bayshore and I are, you know, hoping to, to bring more of this information to each meetings or once a month at least. That's it for me.
I see you, David. So I don't have a whole, whole lot to add from previous times. Yes, as you notice, roads are getting paved. Crew's been out following up, getting some of the striping down on the crosswalks. And they have been working on a few catch bases in different locations as well. I would add, as a note, there are a few signs out there, but just to let you know, we probably aren't going to do pickup as far as brush and clippings and like, until after October fifteenth. It could be a little bit longer. Obviously, they, you know, it's priority. So please keep bagging and bundling until further notice.
Trustee Bass.
All right. Park and Tree Board, the last meeting. All right, they had, their next meeting is September nineteenth, seven P M. It's going to be in the library, where we are now, Tuesday. One thing they did at the last meeting, they passed a motion to recommend to the village board, and I just heard about it today, that was in that meeting. So, but in the village law, it says that the park and tree board can have at least five members. And their suggestion to us is to, and if this is possible, Carla, you can weigh in, is for us to pass a policy. This is what they're suggesting, is that they have five members on their committee plus a sixth alternate when five is not in attendance. So they wanted us to consider if that could be a, a way for them to operate.
They currently have six sitting members, correct?
I think they have five in there, but there's one pending.
Well, are you counting at Hirsch?
Ed, probably, yeah. Ed wants to leave, though. He's waiting.
Right, and that, that was the pending, is the Hirsch placement, because Ken, I've been just replacing it as the different form.
So, and he's waiting for us to replace it and then leave. So, I guess.
Let's, let's, let's figure this out once and for all, because we had the back and forth before. And what it turned out was, we ended up at six, it looked like. And I, as I said, I just replace him as they leave. And so I was getting ready to replace Ed, because he's been saying exactly what you said, you know, he's intentionally leaving it. And so that conversation probably needs to ensue now.
So what they're recommending is they get a five person with a sixth as an alternate for when someone's missing. That's their suggestion.
I'll discuss with Caitlin, so I overheard that conversation still about the, what would be the replacement for it. But obviously that affects it too, so.
Okay. Then the Arts Committee, November eighteenth and December thirtieth, at three P M. At Brookside Museum, they're having two concerts called The Sounds in Winter in November. It's the James Street Quartet. And in December, they're going to have a classical trio, like a violin, cello, piano. So that's November eighteenth and thirtieth. And I encourage everyone to attend. Should be, all their musicians are professional, great. It's awesome, awesome concerts that, that I could. And the other important announcement is. And the other important announcement is that any artist looking to do community public art through the Sanatoga Arts with the village as a fiscal sponsor, they should approach the arts committee by mid-November. So they still have time, but somewhere in early to mid-November, they should be getting their application. Of course, they could start the conversation with the committee at any time if they're looking to have the village as a fiscal sponsor. And the arts committee's next meeting is September 14th.
Thank you. Treasurer's report is in the attachment, something spellbinding in that that I could identify. So if you want to review it, please just see our attachments on the website with a regular agenda for this. RFP for zoning in old businesses is where we end up now. And just to, out of disclosure here, transparency. So since the last meeting, as you remember, trustee Formos has done a draft, and we had some comments back and forth about maybe approving the draft. On Friday last week, trustee Raymond had sent some extensive comments. Thank you, Sean, for that, because it was very helpful. As I was trying to finish up my own comments to match up, make some additional changes based on some of this sage advice on that. Bernadette had taken my version and adopted some further changes into it and sent it over to trustee Formos. Last night, trustee Baskin, who actually gave some minor comments at some point last week as well, as you did state, provided kind of an ameliorated version of what Bernadette had sent in and what Liz had come up with. And we went back and forth today, and ultimately, from what I could tell, an agreement was reached on kind of a shorter version in certain areas to kind of allow more creativity from a consultant, to also make sure that we're not over tasking in it so that we don't get any bits at all because of possible cost issues, which was a concern if you were to sign up. And so I think when we get to that point, there's going to be one unified version voted on later on in this agenda. Is that accurate for everybody? It's, yeah, it's the long motion.
So, yeah, I just, I want to say, I want to thank everybody for coming together. I can't hear myself at all. For coming together compromised. So in addition to having it more open, it still has very specific deliverables, which is important. And also it does specify certain process activities that we want to see. It doesn't direct exactly how the activities will happen, but it's not wide open either. So it's a good compromise document, I think.
You need a. Yeah, I could hear you.
Oh, I'm saying I have 19 copies on my computer. We have a very busy week on this.
Well, Liz is off, that was why, actually. She says she had 19 versions on her computer of this, and so everybody's very busy.
All I'd like to say is I love it when a plan comes together. I want to thank everybody. We wouldn't be at this point if Liz hadn't started it. And I also appreciate all the contributions from all the other board members.
Let's go to zoning advisory committee appointments. Liz, you're right, go ahead.
Yes, I meant to make my appointments with the zoning advisory committee. The two people are Marilyn Stevenson, who is also on the comprehensive plan committee, and Darvin Bowie, who is the husband of Dennis Bowie. So it's a retailer on Front Street. So I think having their foot into the zoning is important.
Because that has. I particularly, yeah, so why don't we wait for this, and if that was the intention of this only, to name them, to drop the names of the motion? That is, where is that? Yes, let's see, we have to reword that motion also, because the form was not the accurate wording, so I was trying to apply to yesterday. To name the members of, I think is all we're intending to do there. So, we'll name ours at that point, so that makes sense. Let's let everybody name their names for the motion at that point. Determinations of next steps for local law number two, ethics code. So I should disclose, we did get one comment via email today. And Madam Clerk, was there anything else from in writing that came through? It's Marilyn Stevenson was the only in writing version that we received or comments. So ultimately, there were some thoughts and concerns, and offered by the ethics panel that had done the original draft. So I guess the question is, where do we go from here? And I throw it open to anybody else to talk.
I have a memory, it was a long time ago, but when we first started indicating that we wanted to strengthen, we wanted to strengthen the ethics law draft from what the committee had created. And we stated our intention to do that, and we're working on it. We asked the ethics committee, do you want this, do you want to keep working on this? And they said, and they said, no, we have done our piece. Now it's your job to finish this. That's how we've been proceeding. I do have some responses, I don't know if I should do it now or later, to specific comments, other specific comments.
Well, I think if it's going to be in making the determination ultimately, probably relevant to doing now. I would see Carlos's agreement with me on that, so go ahead. I believe Carla may be able to board.
Those of you that actually have computers with you right now. No, I emailed right now the comments from the public onto the code, but I guess it doesn't help. Have it on your phone. I just thought it might be better that they all have it.
All right, I just want to speak. Are we talking about the comment that was mailed in or emailed in?
Well, you can talk about anything you want. It's not like you want to talk about comments, so.
Okay. Well, just, well, it's on the top of my mind. The comment about real property and whether it should say, you know, uses personal residence. So let me just read the beginning of that section and what this is about. So it says, "No municipal officer or employee may acquire the following investments. Number one, investments that can be reasonably expected."
2027.
Yeah, sorry, 277. I shouldn't have said that. All right, so it says, "No municipal officer or employee may acquire the following investments. Investments that can be reasonably expected to require more than sporadic recusal and abstention under 2710 of this code," which refers to conflict of interest. So that seems to make sense to me. And I should say that this language comes from other codes. So the city of Cohoes, city of Rensselaer, or is it city of Rensselaer? They have almost identical codes, and a lot of this language is, or this additional language from them. So that's, that, it's, we're not talking about any kind of investment. We're talking about one that would interfere with someone's job and require recusal. Number two is personal investments that would otherwise impair a reasonable person's independence of judgment in the exercise or performance of their official powers. That makes sense to me, that we should avoid that situation. And no officer or employee shall engage in or participate in any business or transaction or shall have an interest direct or indirect, which is incompatible with the proper discharge of his or her official duties in the public interest or tend to impair their independent judgment or action in the performance of their official duties. Again, I think a perfectly reasonable stipulation. It goes on to say, "This section does not prohibit a municipal officer or employee from acquiring any other investments or the following assets, real property located within the municipality and used as their personal residence or residence of family members." So that's the context for that, that qualification. And so I'm perfectly comfortable in that context, reading that as it is. All right, what other, anyone else want to comment? I don't want to keep going.
Specifically to that section, there are many instances that we would not want to discourage people from investing in like rundown properties, for instance, which I know a number of people that serve on our boards have done, and it has been a benefit to this community. So I'm a little concerned about that last bit of the line. I would agree with Julie and the board that dashed and full stop there. I can think of the apartment house that Anna's family renovated, and it's beautiful now. It was pretty, it was pretty rough before. And so I think, I think that could be very, the word chilling effect was used earlier, but I think that could be not only people serving on our communities, but not investing in areas that are needed. And then people, because they are still engaged in the community, they're going to see that rundown property and feel that it's so important to renovate it and get it back into a usable state that benefits everyone. So I would maybe consider, well, I guess I should say strongly consider removing that, because I just see that, I understand where you're going with that, but I just think that there's more that that would impact than we are thinking about.
If it interfered with their ability to do their job for the village, then they should choose which they want to do. They want to approve it, they want to buy the property, or they want to act as an official. There's lots of properties where none of this would come into play, probably that, including that. I don't think any of this would impact the zoning board chair's ability to buy that property, because it does not impact, you know, more than sporadic recusal. It does not otherwise impair a reasonable person's independence of judgment. And it does not, it's not incompatible with proper discharge of their official duty. So can I ask you a question, though?
Sorry.
If I may? Give me a case where you think this 27-7 would impact, would actually be utilized. Give me, give me an example you're thinking of that would trigger it essentially. I don't want to say off the top of my head and then be attacked for having that example specifically, but the general principles, I think, hold.
Well, I think it would be good to have an amendment announced.
Well, the example.
I can't think of something that would trigger it in real time.
So that's a good reason not to worry about it, because it's not going to be very common.
Oh, so I appreciate you, I appreciate you explaining what you meant by that, but the way this is reading currently, I'm not getting that. Like, you have to explain it to me for me to understand your heart behind it. And I think we maybe need to rely upon Carla to adjust the wording, because right now, to me, the way, if I didn't know you Ben and you didn't explain it to me, it just flat out to me reads that you are not allowed to purchase any property other than your residence.
But all I did really just now is read the text. I didn't explain anything beyond the text.
No, you did explain it a little more, and it was helpful, because I really, I didn't quite understand why you would prohibit somebody.
Right, so that example, I think it's true in a lot, like, when it comes to this ethics law, most of this stuff is not like sending anyone to jail. It's all about judgment, and there's many steps between when someone might do something and actually the ethics committee gets involved. So this is not to trap anyone, it's not to get anyone in trouble, it's to provide guidelines. And so that's, that's an example where you have a conversation. Maybe if I was on the zoning board or planning board and was about to buy a house or some property that isn't for me personally or my family, I would want to look at this law and say, okay, do I think any of these things apply? Probably it won't apply, and probably nothing will ever happen as a result in terms of some ethics issue. So therefore, I'm going to go ahead and buy the property. So I really think it won't impact most instances of most people.
If I can just interject, wouldn't it be simple enough just to recuse yourself from the decision-making process? That would be germane, where there may be, you would be able to exert undue influence on outcomes?
Part one is about that you can't even be a municipal officer or employee, it seems, if you have an investment that can be reasonably expected to require more than sporadic recusal and abstention under 2710 of this code. So I guess, while I understand what you're saying, what it's saying basically here is you can't even be involved generally. So what I'm asking Ben ultimately, and I hope you understand where I'm coming with this, is what triggers it ultimately? What is this? What would be the landmine, I guess, for somebody?
I don't know exactly. I don't know. And I think, I think these are guidelines that 99% of the time, when you buy a piece of property, you're going to hopefully reference this if you're an official employee, and you'll say, nope, doesn't apply to me. The recusal piece, what Sean referred to, that's okay to recuse yourself once or even twice. It's talking, what it says specifically is expected to require more than, more than sporadic recusal and abstention. So, you know, it's a big interference with what's happening.
Can I pop in for a second?
Sure.
So I looked at the codes, and then I looked at this. And the way it reads, "This section does not prohibit a municipal officer or employee from acquiring any other investments or the following assets." So you have that, those three listed right there. Real property located within the municipality, used as a personal residence. But there's nothing that prohibits them from purchasing any other real property in the village, as it specifically says, from acquiring any other investment or the following assets. So it's almost as if those following assets were kind of just thrown in there. Why Cohoes, I don't know. My dad's from Cohoes, but I'm not going to go there.
Actually, you might go there to visit him, but.
No, he's fast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
From acquiring any other investment. So to your, to, just for statutory construction, the or in there allows, for example, someone to have rental property within the village or retail property within the village or commercial property within the village. This doesn't preclude it the way it's written, because the or is in there. I don't know if that was the intent, either in Cohoes or here, and just because Cohoes has it doesn't mean it's right. But that's how it would be read. So you.
Yeah, the way I read it is, it's, when it says any other investments, it means any other investments other than the ones impacting number one, two, and three, like investments that can cause recusal, investments that would impair judgment, investments that shall be, you know, incompatible.
I see where Carla's coming from, you know, from the whole legal perspective. The way it reads, it's an unnecessary additional clause. Perhaps it was being utilized because they crossed certain thresholds or concerns specific that they added these. Just to be absolutely clear on it, I don't know, but it is weird that you would say, well, you can have any other investment or these following investments, basically.
Well, it also is in a different section in Cohoes, and there's other things in that section, and it doesn't actually, the part that's in this, A is not what's in A in Cohoes. So what I'm saying, it's, parts of it were taken in front of one, B was taken.
This whole piece is from Cohoes, the whole section, and Rensselaer.
What's my addition?
And that's fine. All I'm saying is that just because it's from a different place doesn't mean that. But what I'm saying is what you want, what you.
I'm comfortable with it.
The way it reads, I'm trying to make everybody happy. I know, I'm a lawyer, we don't do that. The way it reads now, it doesn't preclude anybody from buying anything or even holding any other real property because of the word or. So you can, even that fits.
Okay. All right.
I, I don't disagree, but that's why I don't want to like.
If, if you had your drawers, how would you write that? Then I guess my question to you, would you do a full stop at other investments?
I don't think I even have B, but that's.
Or whatever it is.
And actually, if you go back and look, I'm sorry, if you go back and look, there were comments that I made to this, extensive comments I made to this point, a couple of versions ago. So that's how I have that.
So I, I very much appreciate everybody clarifying because I think that is the way it reads. And apparently I don't know how to read it, but, no, no, I'm saying. But I think for clarity's sake, if we're going to ask the board to, to be the ones to be reading this and interpreting this and then also applying it, that we may be, we, we may be simplifying in simple, simpler language. Not that it's, it's just, it was a little confusing to me, to be honest. So.
Julie, I mean, as chair of the ethics board, are you having trouble understanding 27-7?
Well, so I, I do understand exactly what Carla's saying. However, I think when you add and use as their personal residence or residence of a family member, it triggers something in someone's head that other type of real property purchases would not be allowed because they're being specific to that. That's how I, that's how I would read that.
Well, what's interesting here is that this paragraph I noticed in two does not bring up family members until that real property located sentence actually anywhere.
Actually, I added or residence of a family member to make it friendlier kind of thing. In Cohoes and Rensselaer, they just said, you can, you can, it doesn't apply to use as a personal resident.
I'm sorry to cut you off on that, but this section seems to be personal to the officer employee and not, it does not bring in family members until that point. That's what I'm, now I'm understanding why this might got convoluted because it may not have been intended for family members and then ends up bringing in a family member residence as if it was considered all along. You hear what I'm saying from that?
B, yes.
Thanks.
I mean, I think as an example, if there was an individual who, you know, was buying lots of real estate and would need to, you know, go in front of the planning board and the zoning board and they, you know, that was their, you know, business. You know, that would be more than sporadic recusal. So, you know, maybe that person shouldn't be serving as a village officer because of the conflict. I mean, ethics code is all about conflict. And, you know, if one person buys one property, that's not a big deal. But if it's sort of, you know, over and over again, it, you know.
Yeah, that's someone's business.
Well, yeah, now, now you're getting into a little bit of an interesting dichotomy because is owning real estate an investment or is it a business, I guess? And you're kind of both using words that loosely that both have an import in something like this. And I'm not trying to difficult when I say that. I'm just saying from a legal perspective, I can see where the conundrum exists here in a couple of different ways. First, this paragraph did not include family members throughout until that one addition that you made, Ben. D1, I guess we call that, or what should be D1. And also, is it an investment? Is it a business? Is it a business investment? I mean, so. So two, two says personal investments. One does not use the word personal next investments, just to be clear on that.
So, I mean, what the conversation we're having is what lawyers and ethics boards have about laws, all kinds of laws all day long. What does it mean? How do you interpret it? And at the end of the day, if there's a particular instance where someone in the community complains about an officer and brings it forward, the ethics board with our legal counsel would make, would have this conversation and see if it applies to this law or not, or how, how it might apply.
You can add us, you know.
Right. On, on that actual note, there are two instances in the code that says more than sporadic recusal. I, I actually have an issue with that because then it becomes a part of the ethics board to determine whether you know, four is sporadic or is eight sporadic.
The definition is sporadic.
You have to define sporadic.
I, I would like a number or maybe just, you know, I, I mean, that, I have, I have an issue with that in both 27-7 and 27-8 it's used in there. So that, that, that should be something that is not left to the ethics board to determine whether it's sporadic because what's sporadic to Danielle is maybe not sporadic to Anna.
Well, I, I think the, the issue ultimately, and this isn't just a legal thing, this is how you're supposed to write laws. So that the person that is charged to follow a law understands what the law is or what it means. And this, the notion that, oh, the ethics board will determine it once somebody's thrown in front of them isn't fair to the ethics board. And the attorney's going to say it's void for vagueness is probably what the answer becomes. And that's not what you want if you're trying to give the law teeth. It's void for vagueness. It goes to the resident or a person being brought forward, the ethics board at that point always.
Yeah. And it's, it's not fair to the person that is having the claim made against them from having an ethics violation because they don't know, you know, they don't feel like it's sporadic. It, it's really, it, it puts an undue burden on them to figure out what is a necessary amount of times or how many times can he actually recuse himself without it being excessive.
Danielle brought up the idea of maybe having the committee that did this, which is an extension of, not just the ethics board, I think there were three others, two others, something like that. I'll ask Danielle, since you brought it up, what timeframe would it take for you to maybe look at it and kick it back?
Well, I think we did it all in six weeks and that was turned in 10 months ago. So.
It's been about a year almost, isn't it?
Well, I think it took like three months between when you had your last meeting and we actually got it for some reason. So it's.
There is one issue. It wasn't reviewed by the ethics board. It was reviewed by the ethics board plus three people. I don't even know who those three people are.
Julie, who were the three people?
Bob Bush was on there and she was the one that, she was on the board previously, but she was.
Donna Duffy or?
Donna Duffy was on. Yeah. But she had to, she had to step back. So we actually, it became the ethics board plus Bob Bush because we had, I tried to get other members and it was.
Well, the thing is, that wasn't approved by us. I mean, we're having somebody review our ethics law and there are members that I didn't even know that Bob Bush was on it. I, I think that's wrong.
He stayed in the meeting.
It doesn't matter. He was appointed.
You just said you didn't know it. He stayed in.
We didn't know when it happened or for three weeks after that.
Yeah. And, and it was, it was you who said, oh, we'll put these extra people on. And that's not the way this is supposed to be. If you're going to put it in front of the ethics board, put it in front of the ethics board.
Are you, is the ethics board willing to have it put in front of them?
Yes.
I, I am not interested in, in furthering this process with going back to, where after they already told us they were done and we should do what we needed to do with this.
That's not in the right order.
I remember that.
I did not say that.
It might be in an email. I'll check.
Find the email because I did not say, I did not say we did our part. We're washing our hands.
That's, that's my memory. It's been many months. That's my memory at that time, point in time. Of course, your opinion can change over time. Now you're more interested in reviewing it.
That was not what I said.
At the time.
Well, you know, I think, I think, well, let's, okay. I think we're very close, guys. I think we're very close. I think there's some reasonable things are asking. It should not be left to, to vague interpretation what sporadic recusal means because that could from, you know, incident to incident, individual to individual, be applied differently. And, and it would be good to have some sort of guidelines. So that's something we should come up. You know, they can have a suggestion. We can have a suggestion and come up with something. I am grateful. There's, I think there's some other things that they brought up about the relative. You know, what, where do we draw the line as to far, how far down in the family tree do you have to regulate? So, I mean, it, it's worth letting the people that are going to be, you know, applying this code and utilizing it, take a final look and then just, 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 you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear you. And so every part of this code requires interpretation by the ethics board. So for example, forget about sporadic recusal. The next statement is, and this is repeated throughout, personal investment that would otherwise impair a reasonable person's independence of judgment. That's a judgment call. Here's another one, another one. No municipal officer may accept employment or engagement in business or professional activity which impairs the person's independence of judgment in the exercise or performance of his or her official duty. By what I'm implying is an exercise in judgment. Who's, how are we going to measure the level of impairment of someone's judgment, the independence of someone's interest? It's, you can't get away from that.
I hear you. However, sporadic is implying there's some level of measurement.
I think that's no different than these other issues. You can, we can pick apart any specific, any word in here and say, that's vague. And you're, you're right. It is. And this is the state of the art when it comes to ethics laws. This is, you'll find this language in all municipalities around us and Nikon also works on these ethics laws. They've worked on the Rensselaer law. They've worked on the Cohoes law. So this is the language that's used and it is something that, that's why you have a group of people to evaluate this stuff because it isn't necessarily going to be a straightforward answer. It requires conversation and discussion. Julie?
The difference between what you're saying, measuring sporadic versus measuring an impairment of your, your judgment is that sporadic is, it, it implies that there's a certain number.
It's quantifiable.
It, right.
It's actually, then in that case, it might be even more specific than saying, oh, your judgment's impaired. That's even less quantifiable than.
The ethics board shouldn't be trying to determine whether something is sporadic or not. They should be determining whether something is ethical or not.
How do you, how are you going to determine if someone's judgment is impaired?
That's, that's a discussion.
Right, exactly. That's right. So.
We have a discussion about that. However, discussing whether something is sporadic is really not what I think we should be discussing. I think we should be discussing whether, you know, they bought all of these properties and then went and voted to not charge taxes on, on the property, not whether they didn't recuse themselves. Well, they only recused themselves twice, but they should have done it four times. I mean, that really.
It would have to first reach a level where someone complains. So it'd have to be noticeable. And, and I think it's within your purview. Just as you have to make judgment calls about someone's independence of judgment, what is sporadic? So just, just for my clarification,
this applies to village staff, officers. How does this apply to an elected official at that?
Officer is elected.
Well, right, but ultimately, if you're elected and you buy a bunch of properties and you have to recuse yourself on that, you're not going to become unelected. So it's not that, so what are you saying? Means that they would have to step down and say you own a bunch of properties?
No, the one thing you can't do is, the only, the court can cause an elected official to be dismissed. So this is an ethics law. It's really, it's a different animal than legal, you know, that you.
So ultimately, this particular code we're talking about would only have teeth for officials that aren't elected because they can be censured or fired. And wouldn't they be censured or fired if they continually had to recuse themselves and couldn't perform their job?
Well, I think it would apply to maybe the planning board and zoning board and make it be removed.
Correct. So they, if I had to recuse myself, that would be handled through the village board to say, hey, you're not, you're not be performing your duties. We're going to have to take you off.
Right.
So it doesn't seem like it necessarily has to be in the ethics code.
No, I, I think we chewed on this enough for now and we've got a motion coming up. So.
Well, I'd like to make a motion or ask for a motion to refer the current draft of the local, of both local law number two ethics, code of ethics, to the full ethics board for review and recommendations to be returned no later than September 30th, 2023.
How about in a month? How about the first meeting in October?
Okay. That works for me. Would you like to make that motion then for October 12th? Sorry about that.
I'll make that motion.
Fairness, hold on, let me check the calendar if you want to do it the first because they may not meet that. Hold on. So then.
How about the first meeting in October?
Well, it must be time before the meeting. Let me go to, so 10th would be the meeting, October 6th, so that we have the, let me stay.
Is that same reason?
Same reason.
Okay. Can I have a motion to transmit the draft, proposal of law number two, code of ethics, to the ethics board for review and recommendations to be returned to the board of trustees no later than 4:00 PM, October 6th, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Fundesa, discussion.
Question.
And we will allow 90 seconds here, if it's said.
Oh, okay.
You can ask a question. Go ahead.
Question is, okay, they come back with their comments. They say they want this out, that out. And it's up to us to decide, you know, whether we accept those things because we are the elected officials. And then it will have to go to another public hearing if we make substantive changes.
Well, we were making, so just out of transparency too, Carla, hi Carla. Carla and I had this conversation today because I was curious as to what the threshold was going to be on this. And she raised a good point, which was, we were making virtually any change aside from grammatical because of the mirror of what this code is, that she would recommend that it would be considered substantive. So for instance, some Maryland's ideas or thoughts could actually trigger this and those should be reviewed as well. I'll send those over.
It's just that.
Yeah.
We want to vote on this and get it.
I, I get it. I get it. So anybody in the crowd for 90 seconds wants to discuss the motion that was just made and seconded? Or anybody on Zoom, this will be a time, raise your hand regarding that. Seeing none?
Well, we, I want to discuss.
Right. Well, we get discussion now. I just say I head off to the comment. Go ahead, discuss.
First of all, it needs to be the ethics board and not ethics board plus anyone else. I can't tell you how, how outraged I was when I heard that there were other people that we didn't know about stacked onto your committee without our knowledge or approval. That in somehow a pure process that we're supposed to respond to and accept and respect. I'm, I am telling you how I feel about that process. You're out of turn. All right. I get to say what I think of the stacking of the ethics committee with people who are not on that committee without our consent or even knowledge. So I'm glad that you're willing to just stick to the ethics board, the people we named and know. And they're the ones who are going to see this and there should not be anyone else in that meeting acting as a member of that group. And it should be an open meeting. And that also was a point of disappointment that, that because it wasn't the ethics committee, didn't even have to have open meetings. So that needs to change if we're doing this. And of course, I don't think it needs to go back to the ethics committee. But if that's how the board wants to vote, we'll do it. And I look forward to your definition of sporadic.
I agree. It's going to be just the ethics board and it should hold an open meeting because you're not discussing an individual case. And your meeting should be open so that the public knows about it. They can come, make comments, et cetera. I don't see any reason for the ethics board when they're discussing the law or it to be restricted.
Julie, you're more than welcome to register with us to have use of village offices or here. So you're welcome to do that. That's, it will happen. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
You asked it?
No.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fundesa?
Yes.
Trustee Quormos?
Yes.
Danielle Rossi?
It's four to one. That means the motion carries and we look forward to your comments on or for October 6th. on or for October 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business trustee Quormo's statement regarding ethics. Liz?
Uh, yes. At the August 28th Village Board meeting, Mayor Frank Rossi read an email that he had sent me on August 23rd regarding the proposed Ethics Code, stating that I had lied to the building inspector. Of course, that's untrue, and at the time, I simply disregarded the statement in the email as petty politics, but after he read that email at the last village meeting, I had to respond. I contacted the building inspector after several museum board members were concerned about the activity at Mohegan Hills. By disparaging me, he attempted to control the information that's disseminated to the public and suppress actions that may be detrimental to the public. The censorship of free speech, such as we've heard, can create polarization within a community like what I believe has happened in Boston Spa. When certain viewpoints are suppressed, it can create an environment of hostility and intolerance that can further deepen existing divisions and hinder efforts to foster understanding and cooperation among many different groups. But most disturbingly, it weakens our democracy. It isn't just a violation of First Amendment. It's a violation of our oath of office and our commitment to the community.
Thank you. Hold a comment. Anna Stanko. You've got five minutes per person on any topic?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Five minutes per person on any topic. Sorry.
Sorry. Anna Stanko, 32 Kent Street.
Do me a favor and everybody else, if you, to a degree, yeah, talk into the microphone, because we don't want to overdo it either, but we want to make sure you're heard on the video and all that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anna Stanko, 32 Kent Street, Boston Spa. First, I just had a comment on 13C. You're going to form a committee and have them hold their first meeting in less than one month? I think that's a little aggressive. On October 6th, that's not even, what is that, two weeks, three weeks away? You expect how many people are going to be on this committee to all be able to coordinate their schedules and get together before that next meeting? I have put my paperwork into the, on that meeting, and I've talked to a couple other people that have as well, and they agree with me that that's a little, a little soon. So I would ask the board to consider maybe moving that back a little bit.
Thank you.
Second, I would like to thank Gina Rossi for the ceremony last night. It was very personal for me. My husband lost his life two months ago, 9/11. She recognized it last night, this first responder. He was down on the pile for 12 days, saying horrific things. Thank you to Bernadette and Mayor Rossi for joining. To those trustees that did not join, if you did not do that for political reasons, because of who was holding that ceremony, shame on you. This was a red, white, and blue moment, a moment that we should be proud, Sean. We should be proud of the Americans and the patriots and the camaraderie of this damn country. This is not about red and blue. This is not about how you vote in a damn voting booth. All three of you should have been at that damn ceremony, holding a candle and thanking them first responders that lost their life on that day and since that day. So again, Gina, thank you for being the woman that you are, and trustees Bernadette and Frank for overlooking any kind of petty politics, showing up to a ceremony that was very special for a lot of us. That's it.
Thank you, Anna. And again, may your rest and peace. Anybody else? Mary?
Mary Price Bush, 105 McLean Street. I also want to thank Gina for the wonderful job she did, as she does every year. Thank you, Gina. The next event that the Events Task Force is holding will be Breakfast with Santa, to be held December 2nd. That's Saturday after the holiday parade at St. Mary's, and it was generously funded by a donor. So we're going to discuss the times. It's a breakfast, pancake breakfast, very reasonably priced crafts and reading and events for the kids to take part in. And my other thing, Studio A, the scope of the improvements, number two says, remove an outdated gazebo. I was just wondering if the gazebo was going to be replaced. It doesn't say it.
I think that is part of what they're determining. One of the plans has kind of a, what do you call that? Like Kelly Park area there, but whether or not they would move or replace that gazebo with another gazebo is part of what the determination is based on space, I think, at this point.
Okay. So there would be some place for people to perform covered?
Correct.
Yeah, the plan was to have a bigger pavilion where you could actually have a few tables, so that you could be out of the rain, and it's raining, and, and out of the sun. So that, that is, I guess they didn't write that down there. But that's, that was at least one of the concepts.
And we should say, there's still time for input. So if you have a suggestion for the park, or if anyone does, they can send it to any of us, and it'll go over to the park and tree board.
Okay. And I know I've seen the gazebo utilized with the band members, and it's nice to have them up on stage. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Gee. I'm going to hand, actually, out of fairness here, the gavel over to Bernadette for anything that may go awry here, since I have a funny feeling, you know, it's me, require more than a sporadic recusal of me being the gaveler here. So go right ahead.
Frank, I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding your violations of current Ethics Code, including the disregard of the Freedom of Information Law and your actions to censor and silence free speech within our community. As a member of the Village Board, it's crucial that you uphold the highest ethical standards, respect transparency, and protect the democratic principles that underpin our society. Ethics are the cornerstone of good governance, and elected officials have a responsibility to act in the best interests of the public. However, your repeated violations of the Ethics Code raise serious doubts about your ability to fulfill this duty. By disregarding ethical guidelines, you undermine the trust and confidence that the community has placed in you as a representative. I have documented a number of violations, but because of time constraints, I'll address three, all confirmed true by third parties. The first has to do with you not enforcing the additional water fees set forth in the Village Code charged to housing above 90 units. The nonprofit owners of Double Day Woods are charged the fee, but for-profit Mohegan Hills is not, and they're almost identical in size. This has cost the village and cheated the taxpayers, paying their fair share, approximately $60,000. The second has to do with foil requests. You have a responsibility to respond within a maximum period of time to foil requests and appeals, yet you have not, and you've instructed others within your government to do the same, which soils their reputation, jeopardizes good standing on both your licenses, and could possibly compromise the livelihood of others. Currently, you have a number of outstanding foil requests and appeals, some dating back to February, making them over six months past due. Your blatant disregard for the Freedom of Information Law is deeply troubling. The law is designed to ensure transparency and accountability in government, granting citizens the right to access public records and information. By ignoring the law, you're denying the community's right to know and participate in the decision-making process. Lack of transparency erodes trust, undermines the democratic principles that our society is built upon. Equally concerning is your active role in censoring and silencing free speech within our community. You've hidden at least 75 comments on your official Mayor Frank Rossi Facebook page, which were posted by at least five different people, and most likely many more. That's not just an ethics violation. It's a violation of the Constitution, and it's actionable. By suppressing free speech, you're stifling the voices of the community, hindering our ability to engage in meaningful discussions, and instead curating a false image of who you are and what you're about. It's not protecting the First Amendment to the death, as you stated you would do so in a village meeting, but instead bringing the death to the First Amendment. Before you respond, I want you to, I want you to know, I prepared for the normal tactic relying on plausible deniability. So there's no confusion here. I hired a social media company to do an independent audit of your page. I brought together a group of people for a kind of potluck with their laptops in hand, so we could video confirm and catalog each of the comments and hit from view. I also had our water code evaluated by an outside third party, spoke to counsel with Double Day Woods, worked with and engaged a number of organizations tasked with government oversight. All three acts are independent and documented and confirmed. So before responding, please remember, Martha Stewart didn't get in trouble for the insider trading, but she did for lying about it. I firmly believe that you're unfit to comment on and vote on this new ethics law. Your own ethical violations, disregard for transparency and suppression of free speech demonstrates a lack of integrity and a failure to uphold the principles that an ethics law seeks to enforce. Your very involvement in shaping such legislation would be contradictory and undermine its credibility, especially given proof your recent statement that this new law is targeting you is false, considering you've been unable to abide by the old. Our community deserves elected officials who are committed to ethical conduct, transparency, and the protection of democratic values. I hope you'll take these concerns seriously and take appropriate actions to address them. I also hope that you realize the damage you're doing to the reputation of trustee Vandenis Perez and Mary Price Bush, as she runs her office alongside you. You are co-branding yourself with them.
Please do not mention election, election issues.
Please, I'm taking back my time.
You're not taking back my time.
And will likely have unforeseen implications upon them as well.
Thank you. As, as stated, this is not time for election issues. You are not allowed to do so, so please don't. Having said that, I have a quote from a memo from January 21st, 2021, before I was mayor, from Stephanie Carradino of the Village Board of Trustees regarding Mohegan Hills water I'll jump to the second page. Complex is also not defined in the code. As such, it is unclear whether the above provision contemplates 90 units within one building throughout a single lot or something else. Structure repeatedly is referenced in definitions for building singular in the code, but its own definition is not helpful in this circumstance. Structures definition is as follows, quote, "Anything constructed or erected, with the exception of fences and walls, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground," unquote. Mohegan Hills project was allowed with an amendment to the zoning code, which has become section 20591R-2S residential district seniors. Legislation refers to the project as, quote, "apartment buildings," not a, quote, "multiple-family residence structure," unquote, or a, quote, "complex," unquote. Legislation provides that sections of prior laws, which are not consistent with the legislation, remain in effect. It can be argued that the defining of the terms describing buildings, complexes, and structures are inconsistencies, and that the use of the term "building" prevails. As such, I'm relying on prior legal advice, and I have not touched this.
You were not manning it.
Excuse me. Excuse me, sir.
That's not your legal advice.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. This is our legal advice, because I gained this-
This is your attorney.
And Stephanie Carradino was our attorney as well.
Now, I'd like to make the comment that according to Saratoga County, Mohegan Hills and Double Day Woods fall under the same land use. So that's what I rely on.
With respect to the ethics statement, just want to make sure you have your quotes right, too, because I raised the issue of the targeting question, and that reminded everybody that I actually, one of only two trustees, or board trustees members, that actually did the disclosure of a, actually worse version of the Ethics Code that was proposed by trustee Baskin. Trustee Baskin and I actually both did the disclosure, and I stated flat out, I have nothing to hide, and sent it all to the board members, and beyond just the board members, actually. So the idea here was to say, while they may be targeting me, it doesn't matter, because here's my disclosure. So.
We weren't targeted.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Next up. Gina Rose.
Gina Marosi, Ternell Glory Lane, Boston Spa. I'm not even going to dignify the previous speaker. I'm just going to go by. Let me talk about 9/11 for a moment. 45 minutes. That's how long the circus was last night, 45 minutes. Saddens me that certain people couldn't attend it. But yet, during the day, you had time to do interviews with certain people, candidates. You had time to post all over Facebook, share all over Facebook, anything to do with that on September 11th. Breaks my heart. Now, it disgusts me. You're supposed to be leaders in this community. You're supposed to set the example. So she keeps saying to the mayor, "Set the example. Highest standards, ethics, blah, blah, blah." You're not there for your community. You're not there for people that voted for you, that didn't vote for you. September 11th means so much to so many of us. Not even going to get into my story, but I am going to tell Anna that I'm sorry. On behalf of those that didn't attend, I am sorry, because you, your daughters, and your grandson deserve the respect in the freaking 45 minutes of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the house? Anybody answer? Let's see, one hand, is that?
Mike.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you again. Mike Igalucci, 9 Russell Street. Two quick comments. First, I was delighted to hear the explanation that with respect to the RFP, an agreement had been reached by you all on the board, and I hope that when we hear the motion and, and what happens with that, we'll all be reassured that indeed, everybody's on the same page and how to move forward. So I commend all of you for that. Second point, the 9/11 remembrance. First, my condolences to Anastenko and to all those who suffered losses from that event. I'm distressed by the reaction, which seems to be, to be an assumption that people who did not attend the ceremony in the village do not care. Speaking for myself, Martha and I, we've attended several times over the past years. We were not able to attend yesterday for personal reasons, and it's not because of Gina being involved in putting it on. It's not because Mayor Rossi is a Republican and is the mayor. We simply were not in a position to be able to attend. I do not know the circumstances of the other trustees, but I would ask that all of us try to refrain from jumping to our worst conclusions about the behavior of others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else in the house?
Mr. Butte, 6 Kelly Joe. I'm sorry, I couldn't make it last night. Knights of Columbus were pretty busy. We had a important event, so I don't attend much. I did attend that one time. I try to make all the 9/11 ceremonies that the village posts or hosts. I made the one last year. It was a beautiful ceremony, and I, while we were waiting for one of the votes, I did have the live on Facebook, so it looked like it was some of the football players out there wearing a jersey showing support. I think the biggest thing of why people are upset is when you're in the position you are in as elected officials, you make the time. That's- That's what you do. You do it for your community. Again, I commit to the Knights. I got four kids. I got a lot going on, but you know, I, I made a commitment. Took an oath, made a commitment, show up, and I had to show up. So I can understand a little bit of the emotion in, in the room. And you know, I, I think we can do a lot better as a village. Again, it was a beautiful ceremony, but again, I, I want to just sort of clarify that. It's not a personal attack on you as an individual. It's more your position and your role for the village. Show up for that. Again, you were put into that position. Or at the very least, when you have a chance, you apologize for not being there and do your best to be there for the village in any other form or capacity. And it could be anything. It could be family fun day. It could be just again, you know, show up and support your local community. And I know many of you do. On many, many times that we had the chance to, but there, there's been a couple of events where, you know, especially that one is such significant. Because that's the one time where I, I don't think anyone of us in this room will never forget where we were when that did happen. And I, I think what was more important is how everybody, no matter what side of the aisle they were, came together afterwards. And, and things have become so politically charged since in just the past couple of years that we've gotten away from that ability to come together as a community. I think that's one thing that does make this village different from most communities. Again, look, many other places in the Village of Boston Spa, but this is where I've chose to raise my family, to build my house, and hopefully to have grandchildren. No time soon, but hopefully grandchildren someday. And I'd like to continue on in this village. And this is one place that again, you know, I want to get involved. I want my kids to get involved. Yeah, people look up to you. They see when you're there, they see when you're not there. And again, like I said, I've seen you at many, many events, probably every single one of you on this board at one point or another. There are some that are just deeply profoundly wounding. And that was one that was just very wounding to a lot of our local communities, to our state in general. Yeah, it's one thing. I'll, I'll never forget where I was. I know many of you will not forget where you are. But what matters now is supporting each other, especially on one day that has impacted and continues to impact many members of the community and their families. So again, just take that as constructive criticism, not as criticism in and of itself, constructive criticism feedback. Like how we can be better as a village and how you can be better as a board and as elected officials representing your constituents in this village. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Okay, board response.
Liz, hey. I'm a 9/11. I've attended every single 9/11 event and did not attend last night because I was ill. My husband confirmed that. I couldn't even get out of bed. So that's my reason for not attending. I intended to, but I did not feel, feel well, and I didn't want to pass that on to, you know, that crowd. So that's that. Some questions I have. For that, as the BOA RFP went out.
Yes, the proposal on the website. I contacted so far, I have sent this to Alon, Planning for Places, Bergman Associates, Communion, is that how you say that? And La Bella. I kind of looked at BOA nominations that happened in the capital region, local firms, if you have additional people or firms that you think would be worth sending to, please let me know. I'm happy, any of you, please let me know. But I really kind of just did a kind of local assessment, kind of, and just some of the firms have been eaten by other firms too. So there's, it's, it's not a very long list, but in part it's why I added Planning for Places because we already had a relationship with them. But happy to send elsewhere, so.
And has it been posted on the New York State Contract Reporter?
That's a general question. Did you give that?
Not yet, no. Okay, because I've been, I get their listings through my business and I haven't seen it. That's why I was asking.
We need permission to use it, and that's not.
Permission?
Yeah, you have to sign up. I've signed up. They said, oh, you have an account. I said, oh, this is our email. They said, no, that's not the email we have. So we've been back and forth before and we're allowed to.
Yeah, when's, when's the deadline on that? Yeah, because that, you know, you have a relatively short list and getting it out on that site, that's the site that all the consultants go to and given the size of the, the BOA grant, you know, there may be consultants from Syracuse or even Rochester or downstate that want to, you know, bid on, on that.
Did, did we mention that we're also going for a zoning, like when you sent this out?
Not for those ones, but I can, the future emails that I send out.
Yeah, you might as well. They might be seen first.
The other thing is Woods Hollow.
Liz, this probably belongs in other business because we're supposed to be actually addressing what the public brought up in the first place. So why don't we save that separate other business?
Yeah, other business. No problem.
Appreciate, sorry, I meant to say earlier to you, but anybody else want to talk on board response? Go ahead. You brought their microphones on, so who wants to go first? Oh, you just have it on permanently, don't you?
Maybe that's why.
Who, which one of you wants to talk?
I'll talk.
Hello?
Hello.
Is that the six-eight thing you got?
It is, totally.
I just, I just want to say, I, I am sorry to have missed the 9/11 ceremony. It looked like a beautiful ceremony from the photos I saw, and I'm sorry for your loss, Anna. And just to let you know, I was working on village business, creating a compromise RFP that I sent out at midnight last night. And so that's how I was spending my time. And so I was sorry to miss it though.
Just briefly. Thank you for everyone that put work into the 9/11 service. It is, it's kind of one of those hard things. Now I'm going to be personal. I was in college when that happened and I recall coming out of probably one of my first classes of the day and being told what happened. And I think because of, sorry, now I am going to cry. Because of the, you know, my 19s and 20s, I, I didn't process it. I had friends that served, went overseas, so I never really processed it. I kind of put it away. Don't, don't think about it until the day comes. So for, for a community like ours to get together and, and process it together, it means so much. And, and to, to remember people from our own community that, that went down there and essentially gave their lives in the long run. It, it kind of, it means so much. So I just thank you guys for putting it together. I thank all our first responders for being there and honoring their own. So, and I'm just grateful that we are a community that can do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I get this one or not? Yep.
I, as I said, I, I had some travel issues getting back from San Antonio this weekend. On Sunday, JetBlue kind of blew it with respect to JFK flights inbound outbound. And so I literally got into JFK at two o'clock and got my baggage at 2:30 at JFK and got up here. It took about four hours, literally, and change to drive up here. And I was so nervous I was going to miss it, not for political reasons, not for anything else, but because it is so special and so personal to me. Friday, when I'd asked Coach Omsman to ask, invite the football team to join us, I thought maybe about five or six players might show up because what attachment do they have to 9/11 at this point? Most of them, they, all of them weren't alive. They, when I came up the hill right at seven and saw what was in front of us there, I was in a state of shock, to be honest with you. And then in terms of stars aligning, I couldn't have asked for better stars aligning than the football team showing up. And the idea of trying to make sure that they never forget and that they understand what happened and why it happened and what a response was. And then to have Stephen Caceres home, which was no doubt long, but it was awesome. It detailed everything that happened that day from start to finish, from midnight to midnight, basically. And I was just, I was praying that the football team members that were there were taking it in. Because if you listen to that poem or read it, you will relive that day fully. And not for the gore factor of it all, but for the reality of what happened to us. I was in New York City, as most of you know, on that day. And it was my first day of work in a law firm. This was a fly Chicago. And got stuck at LaGuardia and kicked out of LaGuardia and roaming the streets near the Grand Central Parkway down there. And found a hotel bar to house at until three o'clock that afternoon, went back to the city and asked myself, why the hell did I just go back to the city right now? And I hope, as I said last night, I hope nobody ever has to go through that again, but we are destined to repeat it if we don't teach our youth this. And thank you again to Coach Omsman. Thank you to first responders for being there last night. Thank you for all, everybody who's there, Christine. Thank you for coming out there last night. Saw you there and appreciate your attendance as always. It, it's a special night and I hope they continue. So I know that we skipped a year, I think, at some point, if I remember correctly, and not under my watch. That's all I can say as mayor. That won't happen again. Thank you. I get a motion that Mult Avenue Elementary School be granted permission to close Grove Street on October 5th from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for fire protection day. How much is the motion? I'll keep it between us.
They ask for Grove, and they seem to be aware of what they need or want at this point, so we'll just give Grove. I, I did it. They, they, Sarah Johns and the principal is pretty street aware of what she needs for these, of, of, they know. So the motion was by, let me make sure that court passes it. Ben and second was? Was it Vanessa? Okay. All in favor? You may be so, so late here. It's motion carries, by the way. I'm just sitting and looking at what's next here.
Didn't we pass the RFP before the second?
Yeah, I just, I wanted, I mean, wanting to worry is still relevant because of what we did. I kind of get a motion approving the revised request for proposal as agreed to by the Board of Trustees on Tuesday afternoon, September 12th, 2023, for a planning consultant to work with the zoning advisory committee, village staff, and the board of trustees to revise the village's zoning and other land use related codes and to revise the village's zoning map. Okay, Liz?
Yeah.
The RFP will be placed on the New York State Contract Reporter at that website by village staff, September 15th, 2023, and will be sent to firms on a list provided by trustee Cormos along with other consultants recommended by others. Questions submitted by respondents, indication to respond, and proposals received will be forwarded by email to the village board members as soon as they are received.
I don't, I think we took out the indication to respond before I, for the members cross that out. The latest version.
Give me the, yeah, part of this. I should strike, I guess, is what I'm asking. Oh, okay, so we can, so changing the sentence, final sentence, questions submitted by respondents and proposals received will be forwarded by email to the village board members as soon as they are received?
Yes.
Okay. With that change, is there a motion? Trustee Cormos?
I'll say it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. There's one thing, Carla, you were bringing up about, I think where this should be sent ultimately or to be sent to the board members or something like that. I, I don't know if that was ever addressed, so go ahead.
Yeah, and I have to be honest, it didn't read all the emails today with the new RFP, so I know what it says, but good job. I think.
Shocked everyone that we.
I did. I sent an email going, wait, y'all, kidding me.
It's a proposal, stay one.
The proposal should go to the clerk and then the clerk disseminates them.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, they, it originally said it's going to be, will be forwarded by email to the village board members as soon as they are received by the clerk. By the clerk?
Yeah.
That's the only thing I wanted, because at one point it was going directly to you, and then it was going to all the board, and it just made sense that it goes to the clerk.
Right.
What is the front page of the revised RFP saying?
To clerk and to the.
So it should say to clerk.
Yeah, well, the reason I put mine on is particularly if we get questions that I'm, you know, we know immediately and I can spread it around to, you know, quickly.
I just think it might confuse them if they're sending it, like how many copies are sending, are they sending them all to you or are they sending them all to Terry? So I think with all the RFPs, usually it's one of the clerks and then she'll disseminate them and Liz, you can maybe take the lead and answer the questions.
Yeah, so, so could I get an amendment stating that the front page shall be changed to ensure that only the clerk will receive ultimate submissions?
I mean, is there any harm in CC?
Well, does that invalidate somebody's submission if they don't do that by accident? I guess it's my question.
I'm just trying to simplify the process. That a document comes into the clerk's office, the clerk disseminates it. And that's, it's just, she's the record keeper of the village. So I'm just trying to funnel the process so it doesn't confuse people getting it and it doesn't.
And is the workload such for the clerk that that can, that's not a problem to distribute to everyone?
It's their job. It doesn't really.
Without delay?
Are you, you're seeing the P, I guess, and then, you know, making sure that their normal work tasks, that's a normal work task.
Yeah, all she can do is, on, on the last date, take it, disseminate.
I did have a question.
Hold on, can I get that amendment?
Well, just might be an amendment.
Okay, well, let's get the First Amendment there validated, that only as I asked for. And that was originally Liz's motion. Are you okay with that, that change? Yes. And who was my second?
I can second. Oh, no, Ben was.
Ben was my second. Okay. And you're okay with that? Thank you. So that amendment's been made. Now burn it out. Sorry about that.
My only question is the September 15th date for the contract reporter. Jen, how do, how quickly do they think they can resolve that? Can we say as soon as practical or?
Although I think Friday would be fine.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was really, really.
I think Friday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I wasn't working on it, I was working on it for the zoning thing, but I can.
Okay, that's, that's clear. Thank you. Never mind.
No amendment necessary there. Are we primed for vote then, I think? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, she carries. Okay. Well, let me just ask before I read this motion. The raising of the question about October 6th by Anna and other committee members, are, is there any desire to move that before I ask them to make a motion on it?
I think we can move that. Is that we know the meaning of what October 11th is for, for down to. Yeah, so the big, yes, the big.
So my question here would be, if it's difficult in three weeks to schedule a meeting, how is that person going to serve on the board when there's going to be bi-weekly meetings? Right, bi-weekly, bi-monthly, twice a month. If you can't do it in three weeks, how are you going to do it in two? So.
Want to read what you.
Well, just because it, there's already the committee formed.
Yeah.
So my understanding is the purpose of this motion is to name the members, right? So I just changed it to motion by, second by, to appoint the following members to the zoning advisory committee, and then everyone just lists their name, their, their folks, and then I change.
So can I have a, a motion to?
Point the following. Point the following members to the zoning advisory committee.
Liz? Name your names.
Carolyn Stevenson. Darvin Bowie.
Carolyn Stevenson and Darvin Bowie, just for those that could not hear that. Heard of that?
Mike Coffey and Matt Urqueline.
Matt, Mike Coffey and Matt Urqueline. John?
Cameron Parwana and Jared Ayakaluchi.
Ron Parwana and Jared Ayakaluchi. Ben?
Margaret Dannison and John Menze.
Margaret Dannison and John Menze?
Yeah.
And Anasenko, Rory O'Connor and Peter Martin. Anasenko, Rory O'Connor, Peter Martin.
First meeting was basically the organizational meeting.
Well, all, all, let's, let's get into it. Let's, let's finish the motion here, so. And to hold the first meeting no later than October sixth, twenty twenty-three, zoning advisory committee will review responses with consultant RFP and make recommendations to the board trustees by November ninth, twenty twenty-three. Before you say anything, what was our due date for the, I just wanna make sure we're in compliance still with changes?
Due date is October twelve.
We didn't change the due date to thirty days after fifteen?
It's still October twelve.
Um, okay. That's, what's the birthday for October twelve? Usually it gets thirty days. What is the reason why?
I mean, it's short, Thursday, but it's-
Ask what's the reason? Okay, so, look, hold on to that thought for a second. I, we can rectify that. I don't care, I'm just- No, I, I agree with you because it's still, we're, we're asking for about fifteen-page, sixteen-page, uh, response from people. It's not a quick thing. So, recommendations for justice by November ninth, twenty twenty-three, I did read off lately. Yes? Yes, Carla?
It says issue date September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is my- Yes, you have September twenty-fifth, October twelfth, and four.
Hold on for a second. We'll handle the motion that's in front of us here for a second. Can I get a motion for what was read out, uh, and with your participation in the name of the motions?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
O's.
I could crush you on that. I-
Motion carries. Can I get a motion amending the RFP, uh, that was approved in motion B on September twelve, twenty twenty-three to change the deadline to, or a responses to October?
Fifteenth, September-
Seventeenth. October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, that's Monday, is that?
Uh, let's do it, that's right.
Yeah.
Friday?
Fourteenth? Thirteenth?
Wait, hold on, folks, we're gonna-
Nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, I second for thirteen, thirteen.
I'll just do the thirteenth.
Sure you don't want to go to sixteenth on Monday? Sixteenth.
All right, thirteenth is good as me.
Friday the thirteenth. You're sick.
It's my lucky one.
Uh, too many to Friday thirteenth, is what she said. So, uh, can I get a motion?
Make a motion?
Trustee Baskin?
To make the amendment to be due on the Friday thirteenth.
Yeah, can I get a second? Trustee Cormos, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, actually, hold on, I was supposed to give ninety seconds. Anybody want to get public comment on that, Anusha? No, I can't understand why. All in favor?
Aye.
O's, motion carries. Thank you for, uh, your patience on that one. D is no longer applicable. E, uh, can I get a motion to approve the attached contract with Studio A to authorize the mayor to execute it?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Cormos, discussion.
So here, I'm a little confused. So, yes, um, so I sent the motion in, uh, a week or two ago. That was basically the same motion, but it seemed as if it wasn't needed. So I was surprised to see this. So now we-
Advice of counsel yesterday, just to make sure that we're being comprehensive about the safety at that point, and I couldn't find the motion, to be honest with you. I looked everywhere. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I went back and looked at, I-
You got it, because I have an email sent to you, but, uh, that's fine. All right, just, you know, we're getting a little sensitive about our motions getting subsumed under other motion.
This was my idea. Sorry, Ben.
All right.
Not sorry you put my name there, but I just was curious how that happened. All right.
I, I can tell you that I, I wanted to put it on there because there was confusion as to the contract and at the, the motion prior, when I went and looked at it, it said you approved the scope of work.
Right.
It didn't say you approved the contract. So just to make everybody comfortable, I asked the mayor to put it on there to say you approved the contract, but the scope-
Right. That's, that was my initial email to start the whole conversation. Do we need to approve the contract or not? So I'm glad it's on here now. And, uh, we talk about, um, we need to reference the, the proposed scope of work in this.
No, because the contract incorporates, nope, the contract incorporates the scope of work. So when you say contract, it includes the scope of work.
Okay, uh, can I get that motion? I don't believe I actually got the motion second.
I think I made the motion.
There was a Ben and Liz? I'm sorry. I missed second completely. Uh, then in that order, uh, trustee Baskin, trustee Cormos, discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
O's, motion carries. One, uh, other business for me is, I just, in this, or clarification, um, when unity emergency signs the letter of intent, we are supposed to pay ten thousand dollars into escrow at that point. Carla, do you believe that I should get authorization or do you feel that approval of the LOI itself covers that? Okay, that is first one to be made.
Oh, it, it, it's fine.
Okay.
Because that's in the LOI.
Okay, so just to be aware though, uh, that'll come out unbalanced at this point, uh, and we can revisit it if we have any different categories, uh, useful for it.
Related to that, what about, um?
What's all you were gonna ask about?
Well, no, I wanted to ask about the, the purchase and, um, the ability to get USDA-
That's the next step. And so, uh, Chris Honsiger, I asked him to come by for a tour. Uh, I didn't want to do it until I knew we were good to go. I emailed him today and I had a couple of questions. This pickup truck just came in, uh, in a new model year. And so I had to ask him that, how it affects any of the DPW equipment, uh, situation. And I said, oh, and by the way, we're just about fully executed on the LOI, so got some time this week. Let me know and I'll take you to walk through the building. So he, he wanted to see it, uh, as he often likes to see what's going on.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up on the statement that you made that as of the end of October, I think, we would no longer qualify for, as low income. Did you, have you talked to, uh, Jay Grassel about that?
I did, I, and, uh, I, I think you had actually reached out on the same day, but I reached out to him because I mentioned to Chris, uh, the concern and he said, well, send us what you've got. And so I reached out to Jay and I have not heard back, so I will reach out again. Again, I want to make sure we got that all LOI done for, right? Went to that next step on that. So I will do that.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, that's real dollars, um, if we don't qualify for that anymore.
Well, well, we, we qualify for the loan. There, there's, that does not affect your loan qualification. It was any grant worthiness that maybe you could get a ten percent of money in grant form or something like that, like we do with the DPW.
Wouldn't affect the rate?
No, we were qualified for a low interest loan. It's the grants that would be affected.
But the grant would be nice.
I, I hear. I just want to make sure you understand that. What, what would fully nullifies?
Okay. Um, then on, where are we, Carla, on the, with Talo? I think you were gonna make some comments and then share that contract with us.
I was gonna make some comments and share it with Jim Craig and have him make comments. And then we are both gonna share it respectively with our boards and I have not had the ability to do that yet. So it's on my list for this week.
Okay. And bring up an old topic, Village Hall repairs.
Joel and Arrow, I actually come, uh, today, but without telling me he was coming by for something that's on Front Street. And so I've gotta get him back here because that and the sidewalk apron for Union Fire Company. But then I got a call today, actually, from Ruben at, uh, Labella, saying that he needed a clarification on one thing. And then he's gonna need your information, Carla, uh, to, uh, work with you because you're gonna do some of the front end, uh, bit stuff, uh, to package it. So, uh, we're probably within a week of that, at least getting finalized and out the door to, gotta get voted on in a couple of weeks.
So that's the, the two, the vault repair and the wall?
The vault repair, I've gotta get Joe back over here so that we can review where we're going with our P. I'd asked him to let me know when he was coming for the Front Street project. He didn't do so in time, so I unfortunately couldn't, uh, get him to look at it today, but I want him to do so in the next couple of days if he can get back here.
And the, and the wall is also?
Yeah.
Okay, because that wall looks like it's about come down.
Did they go, get to reunion today or?
Did they go to union? No, this was based on-
I'll follow up with-
Yep. So this, I, I think it was just a, a coincidence of timing, because you and I had talked about it briefly yesterday, I know. And, uh, like, Ruben left me a message around four o'clock today saying, you want to talk to me about one thing and then know who to talk to, Carla and Jeff, basically, for the next steps. So we'll go there.
I'll just, I'll just update them because I told them that they were coming today.
Yeah, so it was, it was good timing.
Do we, do we have any status update on the Wiswell Park sewer study?
The Wiswell Park sewer study specifically from Labella? No, we have not, uh, gotten anything finalized. Yeah, I believe it is in progress. So it was supposed to be about an eight-week, uh, situation. So we aren't quite there yet, I don't believe, for when that we're gonna begin.
And how about that crosswalk? Uh, that's what-
I need, I need to call DOT, uh, and get directly talk to the person, because Joel Lanera said that they're not getting a response from DOT. It's a simple modification. I, I look at you, I should look at you when I say this. It's a simple modification and I don't know why it took them this long. It was the right thing to do to make sure it's okay so that they don't come along and be like, oh, no, you can't do that with it. That's not where we set. But I think, again, some of the turnover that's occurred at DOT may have made this a little bit more convoluted on the DOT side. Not, not everybody stays there as long as Sean, apparently. I think Joe had sent me the contact. I've gotta sit down and, uh, make the phone call over. Tell him so. If I do need one, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thanks for following up on that.
Yeah.
Oh, and that just, um, can we get the family fund day expenses next meeting?
I think they're working on that. In fact, Gina said something to me today about, definitely we're gonna be ready for tonight, but they're endeavoring for the next beginning, is what she told me.
Oh, it's not our treasure, is it?
No, uh, because there's the in-kind aspects of it and everything else that never passed through to the treasure directly.
But it'll be divided out, so we can see at some time what's cash.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Who knows?
Well, yes, speaking of, of DOT, I'm, I'm sure people saw that there was some work out on Route fifty.
Yes.
Much the consternation to a lot of folks. The, uh, work is associated with a signal rebuild, um, at, uh, Front Street and, uh, Washington Multi Ave. They will be doing more work as time goes by because that signal's gonna be completely replaced. So there may be some additional groundwork, um, um, coming. I think the estimated completion is spring of twenty twenty-four.
So Sean? Um, this is a suggestion by a resident.
Whoa, whoa, look at that.
A suggestion by a resident. Could there be a sign posted on, you know, the overhead wires to not take a right turn onto Malta? No trucks? Because our sign is on Multi Ave and they're already turning. So I don't know what we have to do to request.
You can, you can make a request now with the existing signal. And then when the replacement comes, they have to replace it.
If you could let me know how to do that, because I thought that was an excellent idea by the resident, that you put the sign on Route fifty that there's no trucks going on.
I would say that it probably would be better served on the signal pole, because the size of the sign you want isn't a typical size that we would be paying on an overhead.
I don't know the details, you know.
A couple of things that, uh, people have mentioned that. I'm kinda waiting to see if, uh, there's some room to make this discussion happen with DOT is, uh, delay greens for pedestrian purposes and, uh, the Front Street intersection and the Multi Avenue intersection with fifty. And all, better timing of three traffic lights in unison, because the timings have been a little bit off there, and the left turn off of East High Street. Uh, those three things to become the hit parade, I would call it, um, for folks. And I would like to see that, uh, improved. But again, I'm kinda just waiting to see what they do here first and then, uh, see if we can get some changes made, uh, up that line a little bit better. Uh, go ahead. Not to cut you off, sorry.
Yeah, we're actually working on that. Um, I've actually created a micro simulation of that corridor, um, so that we can try to, try to improve things. I did come up with something for the intersection, this, uh, the two intersections are gonna be rebuilt that I believe will improve traffic flow, um, particularly in PM peaks. But obviously that won't be implemented until the rebuild happens. So, um, as far as the one up there, I think there needs to be some geometric modifications as well as coordination with the other two signals, which eventually we'll include in the model. But, well, it takes time.
Thank you, Signal Expert.
Having said all that, can I get a motion that, that vouchers be audited and meeting adjourned at survey set?
Nine twenty-eight PM.
Trustee Fandesa, trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
O, o's, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Have a great night.
No, it was, it was whatever that appears now.
Well, six and eight are across for some reason. We got a long meeting already. There must have, at least somewhere.
Yay! Right now, that's what's on. It's not like-
Well, when this thing's on, that's when it's real, huh?